Welcome to the City of Lincoln Council Meeting of the 6th of February 2017. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. All testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item?
Yes, first I would like to remind the public that due to the President's Day holiday, the council will not meet on Monday, February 20th. Our public hearing consent agenda are items one through seven.
Would anyone like to testify on one of these items?
I think we need to recognize Mr. Gordon.
That's right, we do need to recognize Mr. Jim Gordon, who's, well, we'll say James Gordon. I've just known him for years as Jim. James, so please, tell us what we're looking at here today.
Well, I'm six-two and about 230 pounds and got all my own teeth and my own hair. What would you like to know?
Excellent. So you're being appointed to the Veterans Memorial Garden Advisory Council?
I am.
And tell us about your experience, what brings you to this appointment?
Well, I think it goes back to 1967 when I was in Vietnam, in the United States Army, a radio man in an air cavalry company. I'd done about a dozen combat assaults and on the last one it didn't turn out very well. And at that time and on that day and in the same strike that I was wounded, we lost two men and had 11 wounded, including myself. Ever since then, I've been a veteran in every sense of the word. And I think that one of the really important steps in that process was to be asked to serve as the, I guess, the person in charge of the ceremony when we dedicated the Veterans' Memorial Gardens. And I told them the story, when I was a little kid, we would play football on the same track land, it was mud, but we didn't care. And then when they decided to make those, that piece of ground, the Veterans Memorial Gardens, it took on special meaning for me. I've been working with the group that's, I guess, monitoring the work of the gardens and I've been enthused about what they're doing and I would very much like to be part of that.
Okay, do you have any questions for Carl?
Yes, Jim, we also need to have for records your full name and address.
That's true. My proper name is James Edward Gordon. My address is 3311 Timberview Court, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68506, and then four that I can never remember after that.
Great. Thank you for, obviously, your service to our nation and your many ways that you've served the community. I've learned under you the art of mediation and thanks for that personal guidance and for your additional service in this way.
Thank you.
Trent?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for your service to this country and for all the great things that you've done.
I know this is kind of solemn and kind of important that we don't be too comedic about this, but I must tell you two things. I was going to stand up and tell you or relate to you two things that my former law partner and good friend Charlie Thon told me. Be brief, no matter how long it takes. And I'm going to be brief, no matter how long it takes.
John?
No, he had a second thing you were gonna say, Charlie told you.
That's it?
Oh, that was it?
He told you twice.
Oh, he told you twice, okay.
I'll share that one for you later.
Oh, okay. Charlie's gentleman, too. No, I have known Jim for so long and he is just an outstanding individual, so I appreciate you doing that. It is an important fabric in our community and I remember playing over there, too, there in Allo Park. And so just be thankful every day for the freedoms we enjoy and Jim knows those very well.
I think the other part of it is, and you may know this, I was born and raised here. My family started here when my father's father came here in 1885. Our roots run long and deep and anything I can do to help this community or this state, I'm willing to do it.
John, you need to be congratulated, too, for the things he's done nationally on Make-A-Wish and just a number of fine organizations.
I was rewarded in so many ways for such little effort, I really can't believe it to this day. People were gracious in so many ways and we were helping their kids, so that's what it was about for me and to be praised and thanked for it was very special.
Hey, Jane?
Well, Jim, I want to thank you for your impeccable credentials, your years of service, but I bet they are also bringing you on board because you're a gardening expert.
Well, what do you know that I don't know?
Have good taste.
I'm a gardening expert because I grow vegetables with tender loving care. And in my neighborhood, I am the tomato whisperer. Now, they don't know what I'm saying to those tomatoes, but I do go out there, I feed them, I water them, and then I talk to them. And pretty soon, they reward me by giving fruit that is some of the best you could ever think of.
I think the word is out on the street, that's what you're doing.
Okay. Well, Jim, thank you for your lifetime of service and your continuing service to the city. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, all of you, I appreciate it.
Are there any other testimony on the consent agenda?
Is there someone from the Urban Design Committee? Appointments? Are there any?
Those are reappointments.
Those are reappointments.
Reappointments, okay.
Okay. Next item, please.
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. Items one through three were introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Items four and five were introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trent, seconded by Jane. Discussion, anyone, okay, call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and address. I'll call items eight and nine together, they're the application of Super C for a Class D liquor license at 2601 Tyconderoga Drive and the related manager application of Joel Larson.
Hi.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Jessica Greenwald, business address 121 South 13th Street, Suite 800. I am the attorney for the applicant. Applicant is an owner and operator of convenience stores and has been for over 25 years in Lincoln Community. They currently hold four other liquor licenses and now are applying for the Tyconderoga location. Any questions from the council members?
Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Greenwald.
Okay, thank you.
Next item, please.
All right, next is item 10, manager application of Montana Childress for the Nebraska Club at 233 South 13th Street, Suite 2000. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
I'm Montana Childress. I'm 233 South 13th Street for Nebraska Club.
Okay, any questions? Carl?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Childress. So you're the new chef manager? What's your title?
I am the executive chef there, as of right now. I am standing in to as the GM until we find something different or somebody else that will fill that spot for now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Childress.
Oh, I had a question.
John?
Are you related to some of the other Childresses here in town?
I am not. I moved here from Hawaii to help Bryan Hospital. I came in with another chef and renewed the cafeteria, trying to understand, like, give the, you know, the patient something better and just, you know, opening up a can. They wanted to bring their culinary scene a little bit higher, so that's where I came into Nebraska and I've kind of been here for a little over a year now.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of these items.
We got one more, John. One more.
Item 11, application of downtown Lazari's for a deletion to their license premise by eliminating 1430 O Street. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Greg List, 531 South 46, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508 is where I live.
Could you please tell us what's going on here?
We just sold half of the business to somebody else and so that's just, I guess, there's not a whole lot going on.
All right. Carl?
So you're at Lazari's?
Yes.
Okay, and the downtown bar is what you've sold?
Right, when we, when, the way the liquor laws are set up in the city of Lincoln, if there's any way you can go between two places, you have to have a common liquor license. So since we shared a door between the two, we had, we tried to do two separate liquor licenses 15 years ago, 17 years ago when we started, but since we take ice between the two places, we can't do that. So that's why we had one liquor license that had both addresses on it.
Okay, so with the new sale, then there will...
The door's already boarded off.
Okay.
Shut up, and yeah, and so, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, Ms. Willis.
You're welcome.
Now, John, now.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move approvals of eight through 11.
Second, moved by John, seconded by Trent. Discussion, please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Public hearing resolutions, item 12 is approving the Wilderness Hills Commercial Center PUD, South 40th Street Directed Arterial Street Impact Fee Agreement between the city and Lincoln Federal Bank Corp. to direct arterial street impact fees collected from development of properties within the Wilderness Hills Commercial Center PUD to reimburse the owners of the Wilderness Commons Development or Lincoln Federal as the owner of the Wilderness Hills Development for the cost of constructing the South 40th Street improvements located south of Hoenee Sea Drive pursuant to the Wilderness Commons Conditional Annexation and Zoning Agreement and/or the Wilderness Heights Conditional Annexation and Zoning Agreement.
I'm Rick Pales, City Law Department. This agreement is basically a continuation of earlier agreements the city had with developers on the east and west sides of South 40th Street and that earlier agreements, the city agreed to reimburse the developers for constructing certain arterial street impact fee facility improvements from directed impact fees from their own developments. City also agreed that in the event that there was not sufficient funding from their own developments to pay for those impact fees, we would collect it from other directed impact fees in the same benefit district. This agreement basically picks up some additional property that's owned by Lincoln Federal. They want that property to be designated as one of the directed impact fee sites for payment of these improvements and we've worked out an agreement to do that.
Any questions for Mr. Pales? Thank you. Does anyone else like to testify on this subject? Next item, please.
If not, we'll go on to public hearing ordinance's second reading, items 13 and 14. They are annexation 16014, annexing approximately 9.25 acres, generally located at Northwest 48th and West Holdridge, and the related change of zone, application of Ring Neck Development to amend the I-80 West Lincoln Business Center PUD for a change from A-G Agricultural to R-3 Residential under a planned unit development district designation and to approve an amended development plan which proposes modifications to the zoning ordinance and design standards to allow the development of up to 41 dwelling units with a mix of single-family detached and attached units on property generally located at Northwest 48th and West Holdridge.
Good afternoon, my name is Brad Marshall with Olson Associates, 601 P Street. I'm here on behalf of Ring Neck. This has been a plan that has been a long time coming. We are finally ready to move forward with a portion of the PUD which is going to move the first phase of the residential into construction hopefully coming this summer. We're requesting annexation and change of zone to accommodate it. The PUD, a little bit of history, was set up such that we were able to move forward with the change of zone and annexation incrementally as the plan came forward and give us a little bit more flexibility with the development. The first phase of residential will be concurrent or contiguous with the residential that is kind of the south border of Air Park as it is today. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Carl?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Marshall. So this, the Ring Neck PUD initially included industrial, commercial, and residential. Is that still the same plan for the whole, the whole development or are there changes in what you're seeing?
It's a very good question. Right now, we are looking at moving forward with everything north of Holdridge, if you will. There is a good section of what is industrial planned, industrial and commercial as outlined in the PUD. When the comp plan update, L-240, came forward, there was a recommendation for portions of that industrial land to be changed to residential. We are in support of that. However, we are not coming forward with anything south of Holdridge to make those changes at this time primarily because we'll have to take a couple of additional steps with the annexation agreement and correct some things that are going to come along with that at that time.
Okay. I know that residents in the Northwest 48th area are very anxious for more services, but typically what we hear is that there are more rooftops needed to justify those additional amenities, so you've got people interested in what you're doing.
The industrial set, as far as a planning stage is concerned, for almost 10 years, they just really did never have any major tenants or interests in the property and so they are looking at transitioning that to a residential portion. There will still be a significant commercial portion, component of this project will remain in addition to the residential that is being supported by planning.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next I'll call items 15 and 16 together. They are text amendment 16017, amending various sections of the Lincoln Municipal Code regarding to zoning. Item 16 is a text amendment as well. This is amending Title I, General Provisions of the City of Lincoln Design Standards.
Good afternoon, David Carey with the City-City County Planning Department. Here before you today as the applicant for these proposed changes to design standards as well as some text amendments. This is the natural next step outgrowth of the South Haymarket Neighborhood Plan that was approved a little over a year ago. Part of that plan indicated the need to take a step towards establishing some more specific design standards for that neighborhood area based on the intention for significant residential to occur in that area over time. So this is the work effort that is resulting from this over the past year or so. I would point out a couple of items just to make sure that we're clear on that, that this not only is the, was the indicated next step coming out of that plan process, but also we were true to the discussion that was had at the time, that we're not proposing any zoning changes to property. This is establishing what the design standards are for the zoning in the area of the South Haymarket Plan. There are some other changes overall to the B4 zoning for downtown as well that we could get into the specifics if you wish to. We also want to make sure that you're aware that at the planning commission stage of this, there was, the only opposition that we heard on this was from some property owners that in the original version of this had some concerns, some very, very strong concerns, well-founded, that the height restriction that was proposed on their properties was being impacted too much, down to 75 feet. At the time of the hearing with the planning commission, the planning commission decided to make that change at that time to let them remain at the higher height and that is the version that's before you today. So we went forward and made that change with the package and that's what you are being asked to act on today. I do have Paul Barnes as well as Stacy Hagaman here. They are the architects of the package and so if we get into some discussion about some of the specifics, I'll gladly have them come up and answer some of your questions if you have them.
Jane?
So David, any future property owners of the buildings that were identified and that came out in opposition with the, that were 275 feet tall, those would be grandfathered in those existing buildings and all future property owners?
Those actually, the ones, the specific quarter blocks basically that were identified during that testimony and the change that you have before you, they actually will remain at the 275.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Two things, one, just in this day and age of all the regulations and so forth, I'm glad to see that at least part of this deletes some things and I would encourage you in planning because it is heavily laden with regulations so we can continue on that to make it easy for our citizens and developers. Second question I have is regarding the parking here, and it's kind of a broad question for planning, but B4 typically has always had no parking requirement. So as we look at other extensions of that, that basically puts a cost on the city to provide the parking. And I guess my question is, do you look at that and evaluate what that may be as a future unfunded liability to the city?
That's a really good question and, you know, just to step back for a moment about the, kind of the purpose of not requiring the parking in the B4, which is effectively the downtown area. Part of that is to have kind of a built-in incentive for development in downtown. So that is part of the thinking behind that in the first place. And so we, as the planning department, we still support that. We think that's the proper way to try to make sure that our downtown stays strong. We don't have any feeling that the costs of projects are over burdensome on private development. As you know, we've had some, some private development come forward and they build their own parking, some have not. So it's kind of a mixed result there. In some cases, some of the products that have been put out there have said that they absolutely need to have parking on-site or within close proximity and some have actually done, they're just the option said, "We're not going to build the parking" because it makes our model, our economic model, work well for our project. What we looked at, we do look at the impact on the city for parking when these types of redevelopment products come in. Urban Development Department is very much in tune to that when these types of products come in. In the case of the South Haymarket Plan, you'll see in the plan that there's some specific sites identified for potential future public parking and there's quite a bit of information about the parking topic in the plan. So we absolutely did look at that, that is something that we have taken into consideration. What it ends up being is that we end up coming around to, at some point in the future, the city will be in a position to need to do some type of structured parking in the South Haymarket area. That's the anticipation. We do accept that as a given on the city side. But again, it goes back to that, not requiring the parking in the first place to try to incentivize the projects to come in the door in the first place.
Okay, any other questions? Carl?
On the height restrictions there, I was interested to read about on the malls. Centennial Mall and Lincoln Mall, I think it's 30 feet as a minimum. And then on Goodhue and J Street, 20 feet as a minimum. How far on, how far south on Goodhue does that go, all the way to A Street or?
You've officially stepped over into the details that I'm going to ask. I think I'll ask Stacy to come up and answer that question, but it's a good question.
All right.
I would start by saying that part of the reason for the minimum height is to make sure we don't have one-story buildings in those important areas.
Stacy Hagaman, Planning Department. On Goodhue specifically, it goes, the district boundary goes to Washington Street.
Okay.
And it's, on all of the malls, it's essentially a block on either side and then Goodhue ends at A, so it's a block to the south also.
All right. Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Hagaman and Mr. Carey.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? If not, please call the next item.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session. Item 12, the Wilderness Hills Commercial Center PUD, South 40th Street Directed Arterial Street Impact Fee Agreement. This was introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by John. Discussion, please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Public hearing ordinance's second reading are items 13 through 16. Ordinance's third reading, item 17, Change of Zone 16043, application of E&amp;G Enterprises for a change from R-2 Residential to O-3 Office Park at 8080 O Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
By Camp.
Moved by Camp, seconded by Eskridge, yeah. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item 18, Use Permit 16011, application of E&amp;G Enterprises to allow an early childhood care facility up to 8,000 square feet in size for 130 children, along with waivers to reduce the rear yard, side yard, and sign location setback requirements in the O-3 District at 8080 O Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved by Camp.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion, please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item 19, Change of Zone 16034, application of Kelly Custom Homes to designate the John G. Cordner House as a landmark, changing the zoning district from R-2 Residential to R-2 Residential with landmark overlay at 325 South 55th Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved by Camp.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion, please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item 20 is Special Permit 16055, application of Kelly Custom Homes for historic preservation of the John G. Cordner House to permit a community unit plan consisting of nine dwelling units with waivers to eliminate pedestrianways sidewalk requirements, to allow lots to exceed lot width to depth ratio, to eliminate the requirement that lots from front upon a public street, to reduce front yard setbacks, minimum lot width and minimum lot area, and to exceed community unit plan density requirements at 325 South 55th Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved by Camp.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Discussion, Carl?
Yeah, this is a really interesting little project. I mean, this, this is a historic house in the community that probably very few people in the city know it even exists because it's tucked away in a neighborhood and this development not only provides for nine other residences to be built along with it, but it provides protection and enhancement for this historic property. So kudos to the people that are doing this, this is a great thing.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next is item 21, Change of Zone 16039, application of First Street Bible Church to designate the former First German Congregational Church as a landmark, changing the zoning district from R-4 Residential to R-4 Residential with landmark overlay at 100 West F Street, introduced by Christensen. by Christensen.
So moved by Camp.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried seven, five to zero. Item 22, special permit 16058, application of First Street Bible Church for historic preservation of the former First German Congregational Church to allow reduction of the rear yard to 10 feet and variance of parking requirements at 100 West F. Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved by Camp.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Discussion? Carl?
Yes, thank you. A historic church in the South Bottoms that it's great that the First Street Bible Church has taken over this property, that they're wanting to enhance the property and to serve the neighborhood and community as something that they're actively trying to do. And just, again, a great addition to a very historic part of our city.
Very good. Call the roll, please.
Fellers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Item 23 is the real estate sales agreement for the sale of city-owned property at the northwest corner of 21st and Y. Streets, introduced by Christensen.
So moved by Camp.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Carl. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Fellers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are items 24 through 31. Our ordinances on first reading are items 32 through 38. On items 37 and 38, we did have a request for council to suspend their rules to have second and third reading on February 13th.
Discussion? Well, first, we need a motion.
Introduced by Fellers.
I'll move the, I'll move the suspension of the rules on items 37 and 38.
Do we have a second? No second, so it will not be discussed.
Motion.
And will not be acted upon.
All right.
Mr. Chair, do you have any shape of anything?
We have, I think we have one other item we're going to do, is it would take something off of pending, is that right?
I'll just note for the record that under pending list date certain, item 39 will come off for the 13th.
Okay.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'd move for adjournment.
Second?
Moved by John, seconded by Jane. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Fellers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
We are adjourned.